Good evening and welcome to the July 15, 2021 Northampton County Council meeting. I've asked Mr. Cusick to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Clark, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cusick?
President.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Mrs. Ferraro?
Ferraro is here.
Mr. Giovanni?
President.
Mr. Hackman?
President.
Mr. Lot?
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Here.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 1, 2021?
Motion.
Mr. Myers, second?
Second.
Ms. Zirinsky, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. Ms. Zirinsky has a proclamation this evening?
They could come in the inner.
What? They'd have to walk all the way around. That's fine. Anyway, okay. Sorry, what is your name? You're Abigail Dyson. Okay. That one. I'm going to give you the rest. And then you're asking me to take all of them.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
I don't want to hold on to these any longer than I have to. So, this is a proclamation recognizing the Banger High School Envireathon Maroon Team, whereas the Maroon Team members Veronica Chow, right? Okay. Abigail Dyson, Evan Finkbeiner, Sarah Nitter, Harper Steele and advisors Josh Thomas and Robert Hackman participated in the 2021 Northampton County and Pennsylvania State Envireathon, and whereas the 37th Pennsylvania State Envireathon was held virtually on May of 2021, whereas the 2021 topic areas consisted of soils and land use, aquatic ecology, forestry, wildlife, and the current environmental issue of water resource management at the local level. Whereas Envireathon is a state and county competition that encourages the desire to learn more about our natural environment and develop a greater appreciation for our dependence on the natural environment, focusing on awareness of limited natural resources, knowledge of interaction of ecological systems, attitudes of concern to protect the environment, and developing the skills needed to help identify and correct environmental problems. And whereas Northampton County winner and representative at the state competition was the Banger Maroon Team, and the Banger Team has won the county-level competition every year the Envireathon was held since 2016. Great job. Whereas at the state level, the Banger Maroon Team placed fifth overall in the state in a competition where the top five winning teams were separated by only 15.66 points. Now, therefore, the County Council of Northampton County hereby awards and recognizes the consistent excellence and 2021 victory of the Banger High School Maroon Team members for their drive and commitment to being environmentally aware and action-oriented adults. Thank you.
Okay, good, all right.
They're light though.
Thank you.
Does Becky take a picture?
She can.
Where is she?
I have a couple.
Oh, do you? Did you? Okay. If you could send one to me.
Okay. Absolutely.
Mr. Lamont, would you like to get into the picture? You always like. This was a great, great meet, and I'm very proud of you. This is part of the Conservation Districts, and I'm on their board, and it makes me very happy to see you participating in the environment and getting so excited about it. So, this means a lot.
You should probably have them in front of the council.
Yep, right here.
Absolutely.
Get in the middle, guys.
You guys get in the middle.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Big deal.
Congratulations very much.
True. Okay, this evening, courtesy of the floor, I don't have anyone signed up this evening. Is there anyone here who wishes from the public to address council this evening? If you do, you need to come to the podium, state your name and address, and you will get five minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kathy Rifford, and I live at the Oliver Border House in Nazareth. And I would like to thank all of you for listening to us tonight, especially to Councilwoman Zirinsky for coming to the building and inspecting it for us. First and foremost, we're here tonight to ask you to consider regaining control of Northampton County, or, I'm sorry, of the Border House. From, yeah, I'll be fuddled here. These are some of the issues I myself would like to ask you. First of all, who is Valley Housing Development Corporation? Are they a subsidiary of Lehigh County, or are they a subcontractor? And did you, whoever voted on putting management into their hands, know at the time that they were going to be turning their management over to Valley Housing, Lehigh, no, Valley Housing Development Corporation? Because that's who's managing us right now. When I moved into the Oliver Border House five and a half years ago, it was mostly elderly with a few younger, quiet, disabled people. And I was happy. I had found a place clean and quiet, a place to live out my life without any stress. However, now it is anything but. It is a mixture of nursing home, mental hospital, and group home for the mentally challenged. Our lease states that you must be able to take care of yourself, but lately, it is not the case. There are some people who need aids 24/7. Also, it seems that the last eight residents are men. When I questioned the manager, she told me in a defensive and belligerent way that she was going by the list. So, my question was, what list? Because I myself believe, and I can't speak for anyone else that's here to speak tonight, that they're taking the Northampton County list, the Lehigh County list, and the Valley Housing list, and combining them, and choosing from those three lists. She said to me, I only go by the list. And like I said, my question to her was, what list? And that's when she told me she didn't need to stand there and be badgered by me, and it was a simple question. My last issue is the reputation of the Border House. In the first three years that I lived there, the police were only there on one occasion for a tenant problem. The rest of the time they came, they were there for wellness calls or to assist the EMTs. In the past two and a half years, it seems they're there three or four times a week and for frivolous tenant calls. I would be interested in a report that you guys may be able to get from the Nazareth Police Department on how many calls they have made in the last two years to the Oliver Border House. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rifford. Is there anyone else that wishes?
Yeah, we have like six people here.
Same protocol, say your name, your address, and you get five minutes. Thank you.
Joanne Messinger, 551 Sype Avenue in Nazareth. I do not live at the Border House, but I have many friends there, and I visit quite often. And this, I've lived in Nazareth my whole life, and this place has gone downhill so bad. The office is not worth the room they take up. They are treating one girl in that place so bad. They moved her from the fourth floor down to the first floor, and they tell her she cannot come off that floor. If she wants to come up to the front.
One minute, could we close the door, please, because I'd like to hear her?
If she wants to come to the front patio, or back patio, I guess it is, she's got to walk all the way around the building. This girl has done nothing. She's very helpful to people. She helps them make their beds, some of the older ones. And there are certain people that are complaining about her, and this girl is not doing what they're saying. And this office just will not listen. They will never get her side of the story. They will always listen to the complainer, but they will never bring her in and listen to the other side. You know, it is just so unfair what this girl is going through. Right now, I think she's worried she's going to be evicted. You know, it just, something has got to be done with this place. It has gone downhill, and like I said, I've known that Border House forever. I've lived in Nazareth my whole life. So, that's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Trudy Davis. I'm also a resident of the Oliver Border House. My husband Bob and I moved into the Border House in October of 2012. He has since passed, but we were happy with our housing arrangement. We enjoyed our neighbors, we ate lunches and socialized in the senior center, we were proud to stay where we lived. Now, things have changed. There's no longer pride in the old, dirty, red building on the top of the hill. I've heard that description many times while riding the bus back and forth to Palmer Mall. The retaining walls are starting to fall apart, the entry steps have huge cracks in them, and the red walls are black with mold. Once you enter the building, the floor ACs are no longer working. They, I think they broke maybe four or five years ago. And so, the maintenance put a small air conditioner in one of the windows on the landing of the floor. Oh, and what I wanted to say, these air conditioners, okay, they work, but if we get over 90-degree temperatures, they blow fuses, so then we have no cool air and knocks out some of the lights on the floor as well. So, the floors are dimly lit. We have no, oh, I said that. Oh, and I'll call emergency maintenance when this happens and tell them, you know, we're out of cool. No one comes till the next day, so we're stuck. During the pandemic, each floor landing by the elevators was scrubbed once, maybe twice in the whole year. The elevators, that's another sore spot. They have a yearly inspection form posted. However, the doors will sometimes close on you when you are entering or leaving the elevator. The buttons are dirty and falling apart, the carpets are dirty. Now, one of the buttons happened to be replaced yesterday, only one, but the rest of them are a mess, but not all. There are hall ceiling tiles, panels with water stains and holes in them that you see where water leaked and then, like, put a hole. Now, oh, another major dirty spot is the laundry room. This is a joke. The machines are never pulled out and cleaned under them. So, there is about two inches of filth around each washer. Only the center of the room is clean, and that's not very often. Uh, let me see, did I tell you about the hall ceiling panels? Okay, thank you, my memory, short term. So, these are just some of the issues at OCB. We were once referred to as the Cadillac of HUD Housing, and it is now a building in desperate, desperate need of repairs. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this evening?
Hi, my name is Carol Costelanci, and I'm also a resident of the Oliver Border House. My issues, and along with many other residents I'm going to address, is about the safety of the residents, the safety of the residents from both the management and from other residents. When we applied, when we were accepted, we were told this was a 55 and older community. It is not. We felt safe living there too, but not anymore. Our concern is that management has opened the building to people that are not only a danger to themselves, but to other residents. These people are self-abusive, and no one knows when they could turn that abuse onto one of us. They wanted the halls in various states of undress, they linger outside of other people's homes or apartments, they lay on the floors. Some are self, like I said, are self-abuses. Are we to wait and see until something happens to one of us for something to be done? Management doesn't seem to mind using some of the harmless tenants' diminished mental capacities to browbeat and take away their civil rights, as she mentioned about the one woman who they're evicting. They tell her, you're going to be arrested if you don't move out, and there are many other issues they've done to her. Other people are allowed a wide berth. I don't know why. I said, there's no real management in there. When they are there, the doors are locked, the blinds are all pulled, and if you want to talk to somebody in, you know, in the office, they have two secretaries that say, I'll pass the message along. They never follow up with any of it, okay? I don't know why they lock, close the doors and the blinds. Are they afraid as well? You know? So, that is my concern. Also, the back building of the, the back part of the building by the parking lot, it seems to be sinking. It's always constantly wet, the building and all the ground around it. So, I don't know. They said they cleaned out, what do they call them things, Joe?
Grates.
The grates, but it's still backed up, and that causes mold in the lower apartments. And people complain about that, and they're told, there's nothing we can do. He said, I'll get a doctor's excuse, and they told him, I don't care. You're not moving. And those are some of my concerns, as well as many other residents that were afraid to come here tonight for fear of retribution. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Hi, my name is Barbara Tinker, and I'm an 82-year-old resident of Oliver Border House. I've been at the Border House since January of 2017, and I would like to speak to you about the management of the building. I have seen several changes in management during the time that I've been there and have been talked down by all of them, but the recent management seems to be the worst. I thought that management was getting people together to accomplish goals and objectives and using available resources efficiently and effectively. I do not think we can blame everything on the pandemic. My definition of management would be more than pushing papers a day per week. Management should do more than paperwork, maybe involve reacting with the residents, maybe keeping the promises they've made, maybe encouraging instead of putting off or even putting people down. Maybe just knowing what is going on in the building and not making judgments, but investigating. How can you do that when you go into the office, lock the door, and pull down the shades? That gesture alone makes us feel inferior, almost as if we were the enemy. In many ways, we are treated like lower-class citizens. I have been spoken to like a child and have observed what I consider verbal abuse to a fellow resident. Person after person has said to me that they are afraid to speak up for fear that they will be persecuted like the ones we have watched being treated badly and unfairly. By the way, I did my own paperwork this January to have my rent increased. I was given a letter stating what I should provide, when and how it should be done, and when it should be handed in. Yes, during the pandemic, we had to stand out in the hall and talk through the glass if we had an issue, so everyone in the whole first floor and the people coming off the elevator was able to hear our issues. I hope this meeting will spur an investigation. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak before council this evening?
All right. Hi, my name is Nancy Cashmere. I have lived at the Oliver Border House.
Just a minute, Nancy.
I'm short.
State your name again, just so we have it.
Nancy Cashmere.
Thank you.
I have lived at the Oliver Border House for two and a half years. It was really nice when I first moved there, but quickly went downhill. The days we had very high 90s, the weekend, the hall air conditions were working, it was stifling in the building, as I take care of a client in the building there too. When I mentioned that Monday to the maintenance guy nicely, the hot, dangerous, dangerous that was serious to him, he was very annoyed, the maintenance guy. Then I asked him to help me do something, and he said I, he just said that he wouldn't help me fix something because it was about the air conditions. Also, I've been very sick for months on medications and allergies, coughing, breathing with my asthma has gotten a lot worse in my apartment. Something has, something's in the environment in the apartment that's causing me to get very sick. I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's mold or something with the cement floors, I don't know. But when I leave my apartment building, I feel much better, and I don't cough. I had some situations that I talked to staff, and they said I was, if I wasn't happy, to move out. And I had three different situations this month, and basically, they threatened me to fill out an application and to find another place and to move out. And I haven't broken any rules, and I'm just advocating for the seniors, other seniors in the building. We have rights, and the staff treats us like we don't have any rights. I really don't feel this building is a safe building health-wise and in general, just safe in general with some of the people that live in that building. And the laundry room floor is such a disgrace with the cracks and it's splitting apart, and they promised us a new floor, and it never did happen. So, you know, everybody else talked about a lot of other issues, but all I'm asking is, please help us make our building what it used to be, make it our home again, and thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Rice. I lived at the Border House for 10 years, and believe me, it has changed. I'm the grandmother of the group. I'm 91 years old. Thank you, thank you. But there is a big difference in this building. I remember back when I came in in 11, the office was wonderful. Ginny was strict, strict. Jenny was wonderful, but you didn't get away with what they're getting away with today. That office, they asked me a question. I asked her if she wanted the truth. She said yes. I said, as far as I'm concerned, that office isn't worth the room it takes, and that was the truth. But, didn't make any difference. I will not go to the office myself. I go to the person that I have a problem with. Why go to the office? I have to settle my own, all my life, I've settled my own problems. So, but as is office, forget it. The changes are not good, really not good. Mostly, everything they have said is true, very true. We have to learn to live together. That's all that the bottom line is, live together, get along. I talk to everybody, I get along with everybody. I'm not buddy-buddy with everybody, but that's prerogative. But other than that, the way they are treating this one girl in that apartment, you would not let your own child be treated that way. It's a shame. I thank you for your time. I hope it makes some sense to some of you people, so, but something really has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak before council this evening? Okay, that's the end of courtesy of the floor. Mr. McClure, do you have a report for us this evening?
First, with respect to the folks who live in the Oliver Border House, Ms. Becky Bartlett is here. Becky, where are you? Stand up, show the folks. Please give Becky your contact information should you choose to be contacted by her. She is on what is essentially a toothless board with respect to one of the properties being the Oliver Border House, and she can get all of the complaints amalgamated because it's time to take our housing authority back, folks. It was a mistake to vote to give it to Lehigh County. I mean, there was a time, and still, some folks have not learned this lesson yet, just very quickly, on any given day, there are dozens of interactions between Lehigh and Northampton County, and our relationship on a one-to-one basis, whether it's the prisons or human services, these all go very well. I dare say, we couldn't function and they couldn't function on a daily basis without the dozens of interactions that we have. With that being said, these bi-county arrangements that have been made through the years in good government and consolidating things in the valley have not worked out, and these people have just given you another concrete example of why I voted against giving our housing authority to Lehigh County when I was sitting where you're sitting. So, Becky's going to get their information. Frank Brooks is here. Frank, you here? Where are you?
I'm here.
Frank and Tina are working with me in an attempt to lay the groundwork for us to once again have our own housing authority. It is not simply a matter, the memorandum of understanding or contract that we have says we have to give them nine months, but ultimately, this all revolves around HUD's approval of us having our own housing authority, and we have to meet the Department of Housing and Urban Development's specific criteria to have our own housing authority. So, all of those details need to be worked out in advance of us telling them we're out. Otherwise, even this woefully inadequate management will then be no management. So, you know, we're working toward a day when we get this back. So, that's my promise to them. We're going to have a housing authority again in Northampton County, yes.
Sure.
Well, as I explained, pardon my back to you, as I explained, that there was a time when it was considered good government for us to consolidate as many county-provided services with Lehigh County in a, you know, on a bi-county basis, and this was just one more of those ideas, and unfortunately, Northampton County has just been once again on the short end of the stick of this bi- a, the stick of this bi-county conglomeration that was created. And it was by, it was suggested by the, my, one of my predecessors at the time, and it was voted on by county council. I think I was the only no vote. I can't remember. It was, yeah, it was during the Stoff administration. I, I don't remember particularly what year it was, but I, I'm sure your staff can find the, the resolution. I think it was a resolution that, that gave away our housing authority.
Lamont, I, I'm asking this because I need, so all the home, our housing authority that had the bath, home.
Yes.
All of that then went to this, to the valley?
That is the best of my understanding. If, if, if that's incorrect, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll correct that record. But yes, that's my understanding. I, I would believe that. I would believe it. I do not. I think it's probably the part, again, pardon my back. I think it's, I think it's probably the umbrella conglomeration of what were the two county housing authorities, but I don't know that for a fact. We can find out.
Is there anything we can do in the meantime to advocate for the treatment of individuals and the cleanliness of the housing right now?
We're doing that all the time. Becky does that almost every meeting and, and if, and, yeah, that's correct.
But is this something that Lori Greco and her?
Yes.
Addressing in terms of welfare checks?
The area agency on aging is going to continue to investigate what they can. But remember, it's a complaints-driven process and, and these folks are, you know, all in pretty good shape, I would say. And they're, so that, there's that. So, so we, that's not a, that's not a silver bullet. The AAA is not a silver bullet. We need our own housing. The, Northampton County needs its own housing authority.
But in the meantime, I sent a number of their complaints to Lori Greco, and she said that she would address those.
Right.
She was able.
I'll let Lori speak to that. I suspect there could be a human services committee meeting in the future where we just address this issue. And I would suggest you bring the leadership of the housing conglomerate in here and answer the questions, the good questions that were posed tonight.
And the valley management as well.
As you know, council committee hearings in the past have made a real difference in, in some things.
One more question if I could. Our concern is, once they get wind of this, there's like six empty apartments right now that they're going to continue to move in, the type of people they've been moving in? Is there any way that that can be put on hold or, you know, it just for spite? Because they've done that in the past when we complained about people that they were moving in.
Well, in general, the, the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing. So they need to be, and rightfully so, very careful about not permitting people to move in as long as they meet the qualifications. And with respect to, you know, with respect to, you know, what we can accomplish sort of in general, it's an independent authority. It's not, it's not controlled by the, the limit of the controls that the county has. And the county even has fewer controls because the county's powers have been diluted. Usually, we appoint, we appoint members to a board that then runs the particular bi-county entity that we're talking about. Here, there's essentially two boards and the, the power of it's diluted and it, management has all the control.
I think one of the concerns that this group had, too, was that the management isn't necessarily adhering to the application to get in. There are people from outside of Northampton County or that don't meet the criteria who are coming in at the discretion of valley management. And I think that's what they're speaking to now.
I hear, I hear you. And, and I would prefer that Northampton County residents always come first. But again, the Fair Housing Act is very specific. You must be very careful about not discriminating against applicants. I don't know the answer to any of those questions, how they, how their lists are compiled, how they, you know, usually it's first come, first served, I believe, but I don't know that. I think what we could, I'm not an expert. I think what we could do is if there's a human services hearing or some other relevant committee, we could get the answers to all those very good questions.
Right. The application itself says that you have to be from Northampton County excluding the city limits of Easton or Bethlehem.
Okay.
Do you have any other report for us this evening? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Excuse me, Madam President. Can you find out for us and at least let us know? Because I'm hearing that this is supposed to be a 55 and older community. Can we find out if that's factual?
I think that you need to, I think you need to have a committee meeting. You need to bring them in and ask them these questions. I can't answer for them.
I would like to give Mr. Hackman the floor because he has experience as the director of human services in the past, as well as being a council member. So he may know a little bit more about the nuances of these kinds of arrangements.
Well, I, I will say, I think Mr. McClure pretty much hit most of the buttons on this. Legally, sometimes when you make certain arrangements, you bind your own hands. We had that happen to us early when we first got on council with another authority we had that sort of took the ball and ran into another galaxy with it. But in your case, it's, it's true. I remember going out to the Oliver Border House in the 90s and the 2000s and it was beautiful. I mean, people would come up and they were thrilled to have been there. I agree that, as, as I was asking Mr. McClure, where I'm not, I was unsure when this happened. I know there was a push, put everything into a blump, everybody should do everything. I didn't always agree with that myself. And I spoke to that even though when I was out of office. I was unaware that Valley Housing, our week, last meeting, this was brought up and, and some of the issues. He's correct and he says that human services can do so much. But one thing human services can do, not that aging is a silver bullet, but if you in fact are in a, in a place where the, the heat gets extreme or unclean conditions, that's a complaint that can be made. Now, I'm not saying that that in and of itself can change anything or everything, but you certainly have the power to put your, as you say, go to Ms. Bartlett. But you do have the right to make a complaint to your area agency on aging regarding any living condition. Were you in a private apartment? What they can do with that, I can't promise you. But you can do that and I can assure you, from the last meeting to this meeting, I think you'll find that we up here agree with Mr. McClure. I don't know how we're going to do it, but I'm positive we're going to work on doing it, that this is obviously not working. And I mean, I think that's pretty clear by what you're telling us. And I'm glad that you came, but, because I do remember the Border House, I went out there many times for meetings and people would be telling me how thrilled they were to be there. And now I'm hearing what a disaster it is. So yes, I would say we will have a, a human services meeting. I will call, I will invite the, the people who run the place and the, their directors to our meeting and it'll be, it will be advertised and we'll see what we hear. How's that? But I plan on doing that. Next meeting, we have human services. That'll be on the agenda.
Mrs. Ferraro.
I just, just appalled to hear this because I was on the housing authority for years and it was just a pleasure to go in that building, whether it was for an authority meeting or just for other events. And it was immaculately clean. It wasn't unusual to see people outside sweeping the sidewalks and just taking care of things the way they would do in their own home. And you're right, it was the Cadillac of housing. So I hope we can get on this and do whatever we have to do to rectify a wrong. They need a mediator, somebody to work with her, maybe Mrs. Bartlett or can, we can work on that.
North Penn, North Penn Legal Services is very good at what they do.
North Penn Legal Services?
Yes. They're, North Penn Legal Services. They, this is what they do. They know how to do this. Yep.
Okay. So we will address it. In the meantime, any of you who have heat conditions or anything that believe, you believe to be an emergency situation, call the emergency referral service or the area, and don't wait, just call. I don't care if, if they get calls three, four times a day, if, they can't respond if the calls aren't made and they can document and that supports your case. One more and then we have to get back to our regular meeting. That's okay.
I just want to make one comment. The last eight new residents are men. Because they said women are too much trouble. And I asked them if that was discriminatory and that's when I was told that I was badgering her.
Well, apparently she thinks you're trouble because you're all not staying quiet, but you keep giving her trouble, okay? You keep giving that good trouble. I hope I'm still talking when I'm at that age. Thank you so much. I probably will be, don't worry about it.
I, I think the gravity, the gravity of this issue renders the balance of my report moot.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, for coming and expressing your concerns.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto the regular meeting. Old business, is there any old business we need to discuss? If not, we'll move into new business and we have, oh, I'm missing a piece of paper, I think. We have a resolution on appointments to the area agency on aging advisory board and the workforce board of Lehigh Valley. I believe that's Ron Hackman to present the resolution.
Okay, thank you. I am submitting the following individual. This is a resolution we received from Mr. McClure, submitting the following individual for reappointment to the area agency on aging advisory board for reappointment, and that is Ruth Ann Terrace from Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. She's being considered for reappointment to the area agency on agency board. Her term will end June 30th, 2023. And you have her, her personal information available to you with your packet. Also, we have a recommendation for resolution. I am submitting the following individual for appointment to the workforce board of the Lehigh Valley in the business category, Heather Cardona from Bath, Pennsylvania. Ms. Cardona is being considered for appointment to the workforce board representing the business category. Her term will run between 7/16/21 and 6/30/23. So I submit those two to council for a vote.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Any questions? Hearing seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Hackman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Drinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
The resolution was adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of the American Rescue Plan funding resolution. Kevin, would you present this motion?
Sure. Whereas on March 11th, 2021, American Rescue Plan Act 2021 was signed into law and is intended to combat COVID-19 pandemic, including the public health and economic impacts. Whereas Northampton County was awarded an allocation of approximately $30 million of American Recovery Plan funding to spend on various relief efforts and, whereas the grant review committee comprised of Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development staff and county administration convened to review and make funding recommendations. The recommendations totaling $1,148,941.53 for 85 projects are attached here, too, and made a part here of Exhibit A. Now, therefore be resolved by the council of the county of Northampton, one, that the recommended grants in Exhibit A are approved. Two, that the county executive of the county of Northampton is authorized to execute any and all necessary grant agreements with the applicates not to exceed the approved amount for each grant. So introduced.
Thank you. We have Tina Smith here, Frank Brooks, Steve Barron, myself and Mr. Hack, Hackman sat on this round hearing. So these are all new first-time applicants, had not been given money in the past. I believe the committee worked to vet that process. So I don't know if anyone has any further questions on this?
I just wanted to, I'm happy to hear. I thought it would, I didn't know that there was anyone from council and that's what was my question, was council represented in this?
Yes.
We were watching closely.
Just for clarification, some of these are obviously businesses that we all know, but some of the, the grantees are just names. And I think what I need is a little bit of clarification as to what exactly, who, yeah, is this a business? What, like, you know what I'm saying?
Sure, we had the same questions, but you're welcome to ask and that's why they're here.
Well, I'll just point some of them out. Alicia Amili, Jonathan Cornelius, Anthony DeAngelo, they're, they're just names. And I'm wondering, is there a business attached with, with those?
They're, they're all businesses. There is nobody in that list that is attached to the gig economy. We tried to vet those folks out. They have a regular business. They have an EIN number. If you have any questions about any of the specific businesses, Tina, we can pull a list of like what they do, if that would be helpful to council, because we do look to see what they do. Some of them are consultants, some of them are home repair and improvement businesses that weren't able to go into houses during the pandemic. We had the discussion about landscapers the last time.
Right.
So, but yeah, that's, they, we've excluded people from the gig economy and they do provide us a tax return. So we know that a significant amount of their income comes from this and that their grant award does not necessarily exceed their income for the year.
Okay. I just think it would be helpful if there would be some indication as to what business the individuals that are awarded grants are involved in, because just seeing a person's name, you know, it doesn't really tell us what exactly they do and why they were awarded the grant.
We'll see if we can put a comment next to them.
Thank you.
I know that the, Alicia Amili, I asked about that and we looked her up at, on, at the meeting and she was a lawyer. She's legal business. And then some we questioned and said, maybe not. So they were taken off the list as well or until we got further information or if they had a professional license number or something to that effect.
I think in the future it would be helpful if it is just a name to put just like automotive or in parentheses, something next to it.
Absolutely.
If we do more rounds, that's all.
A lot of accountants. Anything else, sir?
This is 1.1 million. Isn't that 15 million we're giving for small business?
Yes.
So there's a balance of 13 million?
Approximately.
That's all I want to know.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
That's what I wanted to know. I'm, I'm not a math person, but what, what money has not been allocated? I mean, this is 30 million and we got money before this. How much money do we actually have that is unspoken for, so to speak?
It's a balance of 15 million on this alone, 15 million just for small business that we got in a meeting before. So there's a balance of 15, there was 15 million allocated to small business.
Right.
We only use 1.1, so it's balanced about 13 million left of that. There's a, we were given a list that, meeting before, so.
Actually approved it.
Yes.
There was a resolution in front of you which you voted on, which I think was approved unanimously.
Yes. You want me, you want me, I can read it for you.
Okay, my short-term memory is going. That's why I'm not running again.
Let me tune up your memory for you. 15 million goes to small business, 5 million nonprofits, 1 million a hotel, growth of Norcar, 1 million. 1 million, EMS 1 million.
Okay, and that makes up the 30 million.
Yes, so that's how much we got remaining, and there's other groups that are going to be meeting in the near future that we're, that members of council are going to be on, and we'll be voting on that.
And there was no money left over from any other money?
Oh, no, we allocated all of the CARES money that we had received.
Okay, but what other money that we received from the feds?
No, it's all spoken for.
Okay.
Based on the resolution that you passed, I think approved unanimously. And all the CARES money is gone.
Okay. Any further questions? Call the vote.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Absolutely.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Drinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
The resolution was adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other new business to be considered this evening?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr.?
I received the memo from Attorney Spadoni regarding.
We're going to be addressing that soon? We're going to be addressing that under his report?
Oh.
If you can.
I can hold. I didn't know that, so, thank you, and we're looking forward to hearing from Attorney Spadoni.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no new business, any council committee reports? None? Any council liaison reports? Mr. Giovanni?
On Tuesday, July 13, at 2:00, we had our Information Technology Governance meeting, and things of our interest was the Potty clarity is getting vendor configuration, that solution with the virtual machines, that's what they are now. I have brought up to Mr. Barron and Mr. Mace about our email situation, expanding the limit, and they say they will look at that. And other than that, that regular updates and upgrades of the software, and then also, starting Friday till Saturday, they'll be down for maintenance. And that's my report.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Ms. Drinsky?
Sorry, we had a karst geology advisory committee report, or council report, and Mr. Tom Jones gave a presentation there talking about different karst geology ordinances and model ordinances that exist in Pennsylvania and in other states. And so we're considering looking at those model ordinances so that we could potentially talk about all the karst geology that's in North Hampton County affecting development and specifically the dewatering events in Bushkill.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I attended the Discover Lehigh Valley meeting this week. They did a presentation on a media campaign, some of which you may be seeing, billboards and ads and digital ads as well. There's, they talked about air traffic and airflow is good, as they said, those a few folks on the airport authority probably know this, but in most areas, air travel is down 30%. LVIA is only down 1%. They feel like they're doing very well compared to their peers. They believe hotels are recovering nicely, weekends are filling, and bookings are moving out further, as well as, I guess if you start with a certain amount of empties during the day, those are filling up as well. There's a new Hilton breaking ground on Shannersville Road soon, and the Dorney Halloween Haunt is back this year. I know you're all excited. And the State Theater is also back, so get your haunt on, people. Council clerks report?
Nothing.
Yay, Jen. Good job, Jen, for being here tonight.
Thank you.
And council solicitor report, Mr. Spadoni?
Is now the time to address Mr. Heckman's concerns? There was an amendment enacted by the Pennsylvania State Legislature known as Act 65. It goes into effect at the end of August of this year. There are some requirements in reference to our agenda and advertising and how the agenda can be changed and published. This evening at 5 o'clock, I met with our president and our clerk and our deputy in reference to complying with that. I should report that we're in very, very good stead in that regard because of the memo that was passed about two weeks ago in reference to the agenda being prepared on a Friday and then published, circulated as it is in the administration, and then available on the website not later than Tuesday, which is the 24-hour period before the Thursday meeting. Likewise, the agenda for the committee meetings, which were on Wednesday, need to be published 24 hours prior to that meeting. There are some limited exceptions, which I have set forth in the memo. However, again, they're issue-sensitive. We'll deal with them as they come up. But if it's an emergency or some other type of exception under the act, we will deal with it on a case-by-case basis.
I have a question for solicitor. And I read your memos, and I know what we had done before. I'm just curious, now, council has always been able to, at a meeting under new business, put forward a motion at any time. Does this conflict with that? So in other words, this would restrict a council member from saying, I have something I'd like to put out there.
The Home Rule Charter permits any council member at a meeting to present a resolution.
Yes.
That being said, we then have to find an exception under the Sunshine Act for that to be acted on at that meeting. What you could do is move it to the next meeting. However, if it's an emergency or de minimis, whatever that means under the statute, we'll, again, we'll have to deal with that on an issue basis, case by case.
Thank you. I just curious.
Any other questions? So the memo that I sent out about, you know, making sure things get to the clerk's office on Friday still stands, because they need that timeline to get everything ready. And the same thing with presentations, any presentation materials that come through need to come at least 24 hours before the presentation is given, so they could get the proper equipment and be ready. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion second.
Second.
All in favor? Hi.
Happy July. Thank you, everyone.
Lori, what are all these people doing here? You have a cocktail? Yeah, I have five. Yeah, I would, have a couple.